Order the Atascadero City Council meeting. And I am pleased to welcome up Boy Scout Troop 51 to lead us in a pledge to the flag. Please come forward. Thank you very much. It is always an honor when we have the Boy Scouts come and do the flags and lead us in the pledge. Thank you so much. And I will ask for a roll call.
Councilmember Funk.
Here.
Councilmember Borbo.
Here.
Councilmember Darris.
Here.
Mayor Protim Nussem.
Here.
Mayor Moreno.
Here.
All present.
Thank you. If you are attending in person, we welcome you. And if you're listening on the webinar, on KPRL, or YouTube, any of the other options available, we welcome you also. If you'd like to speak by phone during this, the time that is set aside for community forum, or for any of the items that are on our agenda, you can do so by calling into Zoom. And that phone number is 669-900-6833. And the meeting ID is 889-2347-9018. And if you look at the front of our agenda, all of that information will be on there. And you can find the agenda, if you don't have it already, at atascadero.org. When you do call in, please let us know which item it is that you would like to speak on. And once again, for that, that phone number for public comment is 669-900-6833. And a meeting ID of 889-2347-9018. And with that, I will ask if we, if I have a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll move.
A second. I have a motion by Councilmember Borbo, a second by Mayor Protim Nussem. And we will waive the reading in full of all ordinances appearing on this agenda. And the titles of the ordinances will be read aloud by the city clerk at the first reading after the motion and before the council votes. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Borbo.
Yes.
Councilmember Darris.
Yes.
Councilmember Funk.
Yes.
Mayor Protim Nussem.
Yes.
Mayor Moreno.
Yes, ma'am.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Moving on to the consent calendar, all items on the consent calendar are considered to be routine by city staff and can generally be approved in one quick motion unless there's a member of the council that would like to pull an item or a member of the public. So I didn't want to pull anything. I did have a quick question on item number seven. Are there any of my council members who have any items?
I have a quick question on item number six.
Item six and seven, okay. Any member of the public wishing to pull an item, if there is anyone here, if you could raise your hand high for me. I'm not seeing anyone. If there's anyone in the webinar. Let me get to my attendees here. You can raise your hand at the bottom of the screen using that raise hand icon. David, do we have anyone on the phone this evening? No one, okay. Councilmember Funk, you want to ask your quick question there on six?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On item number six, the lift station motor control center purchase. I just wanted to confirm that the item that's being purchased on a no bid contract is the $300,000 motor home, motor control item that's a distinctive technology. And the larger $5 million piece of this project is not, is going to be bid separately on and will be to a normal process.
Absolutely. So the construction project itself will be bid through the normal public bid process. This one piece of equipment is proprietary. It does match the controls for the rest of our lift stations. So we do need to use that particular type of control for it to be compatible. And so this was this small piece, the 300,000 has been done on a no bid purchase.
Thank you for clarifying.
Thank you. And with regards to A7, it's the temporary contract for nighttime police fire dispatch services. I'm pleased we're doing this. I mean, our staff can only stretch so far. All of us who have worked overtime at times in our life, you can do it for a period of time. But you know, month after month after month, you, you need a break for your health and for the safety of everyone. We do mention that some of that cost will be offset by, by, you know, reductions that we have in staffing. But I'm also imagining there's going to be a reduction with overtime not being used. Do you have a sense of how much of that might be offset?
That is correct. There are definitely more hours in the week than there are dispatchers. So they are working quite a bit of overtime to cover it. We have eight dispatch positions allocated. We are currently staffed at three qualified dispatchers. So you can imagine three dispatchers 24/7. They are working quite a bit of overtime to cover as much as they can while they're covering it all right now. So we'll have savings both from the vacancies and the overtime that will more than offset the amount of the cost of this contract.
Okay, thank you. And with that, I will ask, is there, if there's any comments or questions after those items were discussed? I'm seeing none, so I will ask for a motion.
I'll move approval of the consent calendar.
A second.
Motion by Councilmember Borbo, second by Councilmember Funk. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Borbo.
Yes.
Councilmember Funk.
Yes.
Councilmember Darris.
Yes.
Mayor Protim Nussem.
Yes.
Mayor Moreno.
Yes, ma'am.
Motion passes.
Thank you. We're on to updates from the city manager. I'll turn it over to Ms. Ricker.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. We'll give David a second here to pull it up. Fantastic. We have a number of events coming up. I know that's shocking. It seems like we have, always have a lot of fun events, but especially during the summer. So I'm going to talk about Saturdays in the Park, our concert series. So our summer concert series continues this Saturday, August 13th, beginning at 6:30 PM at Atascadero Lake Bandstand. We're pleased to have the Counterfeit Kings performing for this week's concerts sponsored by Quota of Atascadero. Zen Dog and Paradise Shaved Ice will be selling plenty of tasty concert food. And our summer concerts are always free to attend. Be sure to bring a blanket or a low back chair. And as always, please thank our sponsors. Without them, we would not have this free summer concert series. So if you see Greg Grigger and Alice Jones, Perry's Parcel and Gift, Remax Success, Waste Management, Golden One Credit Union, and Stove and Spa Center. Please let them know how much you appreciate their sponsorship and they're giving back to the community. We also have Movies in the Garden coming up. So after enjoying the concert at the lake, you can come relax and enjoy a movie here in the Sunken Gardens. This Saturday, August 13th, starting at 8:15 PM, we'll be showing Clifford the Big Red Dog. The movies in the gardens are also free and very family friendly. Bring your blankets and low back chairs. And again, thank our sponsors. Tenant Health, Central Coast, Waste Management, and Perry's Parcel and Gift. These concerts or these movies are a lot of fun. I know families, everyone, all ages enjoy them. And again, they're not possible without our sponsor. And then we have one of our favorite events of the year coming up, Cruisin' Weekend. So the very popular and extremely fun Cruisin' Weekend will happen on Friday and Saturday, August 19th and 20th. So the 19th and 20th will start the 29th Hot El Camino Cruise Night on Friday, August 19th, from 6:30 to 8:30 PM. That is the night of the cruise. So we'll have hundreds of beautiful cars cruising up and down along El Camino Real. From classics to favorite to new and flashy hot rods, this event always brings out the best cars from all over. And then on Saturday, August 20th, be sure to visit the Midstate Cruisers Car Show at Atascadero Lake Park from 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM. Always some amazing cars out there. It's just fun to walk through and look at those cars, talk to some of the owners of those cars and learn a lot. And then on Saturday night, from 6:00 to 9:00 PM, come to the downtown for our sixth annual Dancing in the Streets, where everyone can come kick up their heels to lots of great live music and some really amazing bands. Our presenting sponsor for the entire Cruisin' Weekend is Streetside Ale House and Eatery. So thank you very much to Streetside. And the annual cruise night is presented by H&R Block, Sprinkler King, supporting sponsors Mechanics Bank. Friend sponsors include CCPN and Taco Bell. And in-kind sponsors are Heart Impressions and Waste Management. All of these events would not be possible without our sponsors. For more information, including which bands will be there on Dancing in the Streets. I think there's, there's quite a few bands that'll be there. It'll be a lot of fun. You can always go to www-visitedascadero.com. While we're talking about fun events and exciting things, Cielo Italian Restaurante and Rooftop Bar is now open. So we're extremely happy that the new Italian restaurant is now open over at La Plaza. And I have not been there, but I've heard from a lot of people that have, that it's pretty amazing. Good, good food. They said it's a lot of fun up there on that rooftop bar, really nice place to spend the evening. It's beautiful and very inviting. Their dining hours from 4:00 to 9:00 PM. I think that might be subject to change. So please check it out. They're just starting to open. So the information is available on their website and reservations can be made online. So please support our businesses, those that give back to the community, those that are investing in our community and choosing to do business here like Cielo. So thank you. My last but not least, it's already that time of year. It is back to school. So school starts up again tomorrow and we'll all be sharing the road again with plenty of school pedestrians, bicyclists, buses, and other vehicles. So I'm asking you, please to be sure to focus on your driving, stay aware, and help keep all of the kids who'll be out walking to and from school and the buses and the other drivers safe. Please be courteous and patient. It makes all the difference in the world. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions the council may have.
So really, you're all back in school now? Monday. All right. Wow, it just doesn't seem like summer is long enough. Or is that just me? All right. Any questions of our city manager? All right, seeing none. We will move on to community forum. This is the portion of our meeting that is reserved for persons that wish to address the council on an item that is not on our agenda this evening, but over which we might have jurisdiction. Speakers are limited to three minutes and will allow a total of 30 minutes for community forum this evening. When you wish to speak, we ask you to please come forward to the podium and ask that you would state your name for the record. And if you're here and desiring to speak, we ask that you actually get lined up rather than just kind of occasionally kind of waiting for people to saunter up there. And if you're on the webinar, you can use that raise hand icon. If you're on the phone, David, is it still star nine? Still star nine? All right. If you're on the phone, star nine. So those are the ways to participate. And with that, we've got community forum open. Welcome to any speakers.
And Madam Mayor, if you might know, I'm having some technical difficulties with my laptop and it rebooted and now it needs to get reconnected, but I am here.
Thank you, Councilmember Funk. This is the second time that's happened with your video. We, all five of us are here because videos aren't always working. All right. Welcome.
Hello. My name is Sydney Beaman, and I have here my teammates, Rachel B., Michaela Hart, and Sierra Savoy. I'm here to talk tonight about, because we wanted to share with you the amazing opportunity that we have been given. This summer, the Atascadero High School Cheer Team has, excuse me, has attended the Universal Cheerleading Association Cheer Camp. At camp, we are selected to try out for the UCA All-American Cheer Team. Only six seniors are asked to try out at each school. And only about 20% of the tryout, of the tryout participants, excuse me, make the team. We are super excited to announce that all six of us seniors have accepted into the team. We've all grown up cheering together and All-American was a huge goal for us. We wanted to inform you, our city council, that we are excited to represent Atascadero as we perform in the London New Year's Day Parade this coming January. All six of us will work extremely hard to be positive and professional representatives of our community. We will be doing various fundraisers around Atascadero over the next four months. And to help us reach our fundraising goal of $22,000 that is needed to attend the event, we would be grateful for any support of our council members and city residents here to give. Thank you for your time this evening, and as always, go Greyhounds.
And you might want to let us, let us and all the public, anyone listening, know how they can donate to you.
We have GoFundMes available. I think all of us have GoFundMes as well as Venmos. And really, as long as you reach out to us.
And so it's under your personal names?
Yes, and as well as a double good fundraiser we will be doing.
Can you say that louder as well as what?
A double good fundraiser. It's popcorn.
Okay, so, all right. Thank you very much and congratulations. All right, next speaker.
Good evening. My name is Josh Cross. I'm the president and CEO of the Atascadero Chamber of Commerce. And I'm feeling a little bit like a traffic cone myself, but I'm supporting the Greyhounds. I want the council and residents of Atascadero to know about an upcoming business walk that we have planned for September 28th. Business walk is where volunteers in the community go out and visit businesses and ask them a few simple questions about their business. Our goal is to visit 500 businesses over the course of one hour with 100 volunteers breaking into teams of two and visiting 10 businesses each. We have been working with the Community Development Department and Chamber of Commerce Board to develop five questions that we intend to ask each business. This information will then be used by the chamber and provided to city staff to help address some of our business members' greatest concerns. So once again, please mark your calendars for September 28th. And I encourage all of you to sign up to volunteer by going to the Chamber of Commerce's website, Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cross. Ms. Bulleye.
Take off my scout hat for a minute. Hi, I'm Rochelle Bulleye. I am the coordinator for our county's Childcare Planning Council. And Josh reminded me that we're also here working too. So I'm going to let you know of a couple of new projects that we have going on. So I think for those of you that have heard a lot about the work that we are doing, back in June, our county board of supervisors approved $3 million towards the childcare sector. And we wanted to let you all know here, as well as throughout the entire county, those business grants are now open. All of the childcare providers that are within our community that are already licensed may apply and they're eligible for funds anywhere from $2,500 to $6,500 just for being a part of this program. The other piece that they will be able to apply for is any type of expansion grant. So as we've come here before and talked to you many, many different times on the excruciating need for childcare in our community, we have new grants that will range anywhere between $500 to $10,000 for anyone that wants to expand or start a new program. So you can let your constituents know, we have 45 new programs or 45 programs in the city of San, of Del Rio. Atascadero, I should know, right? We have 45 small businesses that we're supporting here and 45 childcare programs that serve our community and we're looking to expand. And so if you would like to direct them, they can look at www.sanlouischildcare.org and apply there or reach out. And we'll make sure that we connect them to the right place as well as making sure that we connect them to additional resources. So this isn't just grant funding. It is how they can support their businesses, how they can support their employees, how they can expand, how they can get wraparound services for the families that they serve if they need meals, if they need diapers. We do a lot of that work and connect all of those dots for families. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bulleye. Anyone else here wishing to address council? I will look on the webinar. If you want to raise your hand, use the raise hand icon or a star nine on the phone. If you're waiting to see if anyone else does, no one else is, and now's the time. I'm not seeing anyone. All right, we'll go ahead and close community forum. Thanks to all who spoke to the cheer team. That is fantastic. That's hard work. So good job. And yes, community, let's support them. Josh Cross with the chamber, so glad that business walk is happening again. I participated that, with that in 2014, and I know that was really useful for the businesses, for the chamber and for the city. So we're looking forward to that. And glad to know all the work that is being done for childcare. That is certainly something that is important to economic development throughout our county, but Atascadero specifically we're talking about, and it's great to know about those resources. Our community forum, since we have no one else wishing to speak, will remain open until 6:46. And at this time, we'll move on to the next item.
I do see one hand online.
Ah, see, I tell you not to wait. We'll reopen public comment community forum, and I see Mr. Jeff Osslin.
Good evening, council. Assume you can hear me now.
Yes, we can.
That's great. I have two things I'd like to talk about. First of all, my experience with the first floor of City Hall this afternoon. I have to tell you, it was the most positive experience I have ever had in our city with our city staff as a new restaurant will be opening up and they were looking for assistance in filling out their forms and getting through the permit process. And everybody was phenomenal, from Annette to Dave to Lorelei. It was a great experience and I'm so happy that our staff really got an A plus today. Secondly, El Camino Real in Del Rio, we have new stoplights. They're annoying. I know I've mentioned it to our city manager and also Public Works. But can anybody give us a status update on when those lights will actually be functioning properly? Sitting at a stoplight for four and a half minutes with no traffic coming is creating problems where other folks are running red lights and you almost get hit on your green light now. So I'm quite concerned about that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Osslin. And because I did reopen community forum, anyone else wishing to speak? You can raise your hand, press star nine. No need to wait. All right, I think we are good. I'll go ahead and close community forum and bring that back. Thank you. We always love to hear, of course, we love to hear the positive comments. We want to hear any comments, things that are working, things that are not working, but thank you. We have some hardworking staff and it's good to hear that. I don't know if the city manager, if you wanted to mention anything about that Del Rio intersection?
Yes, my Public Works, Nick is on the line virtually, so he might be able to tell you more about timing. We are in the middle of construction of those lights. Those lights have to be on a timer at this point in time and not a sensor until the other arm is installed and we have the whole intersection there going. I'm not sure how long that construction will take. Nick, are you available?
Yeah, can you hear me?
We can, Director.
Okay. Yes, what the city manager said is correct, that currently we're upgrading and replacing the traffic signals on the northwest corner and the southwest corner. The southwest corner in front of the Shell Station 711 is complete. However, the northwest corner next to Taco Bell needs to be completed, but they need to do frontage improvements first. So that includes curb gutter, sidewalk, road widening. So that has to go in first before we can put the traffic signal back. So that it might take, you know, potentially, I don't want to jinx it or anything, but it could be a month to a month and a half away still. So these things don't happen overnight. It seems, we do have all the signals on hand. So that's a good news. So there's no delay on that. But until that new signal gets installed, it's going to have to be operating in time mode. So rather than on demand mode.
Thank you very much, Director. And so I guess similar to schools starting up soon and everybody to be patient and drive safely and look out for one another, we would ask your, your same grace at the Del Rio and El Camino interchange. All right, now, as I said a little bit earlier, community forum will remain open until 6:46. And so we'll go on to our next item. And if you, if someone does want to speak, you can go ahead and raise your hand, press star nine, and we'll get to you at the earliest convenience, which will be after the next item. Fair warning, we have a very short agenda. We may finish before 6:46, so don't wait. All right. So we are on to our public hearing, and that is confirming the cost of vegetative growth and abatement. And that will be our battalion chief, Dave Van Son.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and councilmembers. So I'm here to talk about the confirming the cost of vegetation growth and refuse abatement. So we'll go ahead and talk about a background a little bit. In April, the council adopted a resolution declaring vegetation growth a nuisance. So in the end of March, beginning of April, I inspected 11,146 parcels. And out of those parcels, 3,093 were sent notice saying that they were out of compliance, which was an increase about, an increase of about 268 notices from the previous year. And we're, we're putting that, because we had a late, late rain this, this winter. So a lot of people did their abatement. We had that rain, they had regrowth. So then we sent more letters out. The weed abatement deadline was in, was December, or June 1st of this year. So on June 2nd, I went back out and inspected the 3,093 properties. And out of that, 106 of those properties were tagged to abate. That was down from 87 from 2021. And out of those 106 properties that were tagged to abate, 67 were cut by the homeowners, leaving that our contractor cut 39 parcels this year. And so this is just a history right here of the private parcels cut between 2013 and 2022. And we were down by 14 parcels this year. Out of those 39 abated lots, 50% of those people, approximately 50%, live out of town and aren't Atascadero residents. So they don't really, they may not understand our re-abatement ordinance. And several of those lots are also vacant lots and they're reoccurring lots that are abated throughout the years. So moving on, here's the abatement assessments, the tax county tax rule. So the total contractor cost this year was $27,279.03. Our administration fee on top of that was $55,422.97 for the total cost of abatement of maybe $2,702.50 that will come back to the city. So here's a couple of examples of what we're talking about when we do weed abatement, the before and after pictures. This right here is a property off of Alamo. It wasn't cut 50, 50 feet off the property line, which is required, nor was it cut 100 feet around the house. Here's another example off of Santa Ana Road, which is in our high fire severity zone. So it's super important that we make sure that we, we cut these to maintain our fire hazard, bring it down to a, to lower the risk of fires. And then one more here off of Vista, which is again in our high fire, high fire severity zone. This is also a road that's a one way in, one way out. So it's super important that we have these fire hazards eliminated to protect the rest of the community that's living off of Vista. And I also like to show an example of where, oops, let me go back here, where weed abatement was a success. So on June 20, June 11th of 2022, we had a vegetation fire on Highway 41 just east of Los Altos. And we all know that's a pretty dangerous area. We had a vegetation fire on Highway 41, just east of Los Altos. And we all know that's pretty dangerous area. And this came in around seven o'clock at night and it wasn't one of our extreme fire weather days. The temperature was relatively moderate at 75 degrees. There was low wind. But the property owner, if you can see on that downhill slope, had already abated his property. So it reduced that fire spread to a slower pace. So when our crews were able to get there, they were able to contain it under an acre. So that's a great success story of our weed abatement program. So to wrap this up, the recommendation to council is to adopt the draft resolution. Confirming the cost of educate vegetative growth weeds and/or refuse rubbish abatement. And I can answer any questions if you have any.
Thank you, Chief Van Son. Incredibly important. So thank you to all the residents who have done that. Nice to see that number go down this year. I will, it, it might be our city manager. I'll let you two figure it out. But on that chart, if you could bring up that chart of the cost of abatement. And I wonder if we could clarify for the public, admin fee kind of makes it look like we're profiting off of doing weed abatement. And trust me, weed abatement is the last thing that we want to be doing and we're not making money off of it. But it could look like that and wondering if maybe the city manager could address that.
Yes, the, it is an admin fee. It is to reimburse the cost for the city to administer the program for those people that don't cut their weeds. You do not want the city cutting your weeds. We, this is the most expensive way to get your weeds cut. And we would prefer not to have it. There are a lot of steps, as you heard. Battalion Chief Van Son talk about going out, noticing properties, noticing them again. We have to hire a weed abatement contractor. We've got to take pictures and show them back and forth. The county has a long procedure. So we did calculate the amount of time it typically takes us for each of those properties. That do not cut their weeds and that cost is spread among those based on that time. So this is a not a profit center. But as it should be, there are a lot of steps that the government has to go through before we can assess a property owner and those all take time.
Thank you very much. So we'll look to my council colleagues for any questions. Seeing that, I'll go ahead and open it to the public. Any member of the public wishing to speak on this item? Mr. Oslin, I see your hand raised, but it seems to have been raised the whole time. If you wanted to speak on this item, okay, thank you. If you're on the phone, star nine, anybody on the webinar, raise your hand, anyone here? I am seeing no one. All right, I'll go ahead and close public comment and bring it back to council for a motion.
I'll move council adopt the draft resolution as indicated.
One second. We have a motion by council member Borbo and a second by Mayor Pro Tem Newsom. Roll call, please.
Council member Borbo?
Yes.
Council member Darris?
Yes.
Council member Funk?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Newsom?
Yes.
Ma'am Reno?
Yes, ma'am.
Motion passes.
Thank you. We have no management reports this evening, so now we're on to council announcements and committee reports. And this is on our own initiative, letting you know if there's anything in particular, we've been involved in the community that we, that we want one another or any of you to know about. And also the various boards and committees on which we serve and updating one another on what those committees might be up to. So I will go from just my left to right down the dais and start with council member Darris.
I have nothing to report.
I'm pleased to report that although on the I WMA, the Integrator Waste Management Authority Board is meeting tomorrow after our last meeting, I have nothing to report. Which is a great thing because that board has been extremely busy the last year, so.
That is nice indeed. Mayor Pro Tem Newsom.
Um, our design review committee meeting for August 11th has been canceled. League of California Cities, I will be attending the annual business meeting in Long Beach for three days in September.
And the, I'll report that the Atascadero Basin Groundwater Sustainability Agency, say that several times in a row quickly. Met on the 20th of July for routine business, won't be meeting again for a while. That's going well. Design Review Committee is currently scheduled to meet on August 25th, which will be before our next meeting. So Mayor Pro Tem and I will be involved in that. And the Homeless Services Oversight Council will be having a special meeting this Friday for an hour to deal with some goal setting work that we've been negotiating with the state about for how we track performance over the next couple of years. And the big news this afternoon, I was very pleased to be presenting on behalf of HSL to the county board of supervisors. Which unanimously approved the county's new countywide strategic plan to address homelessness.
Excellent. Thank you for your dedication and commitment to that entire project.
It was my honor and pleasure.
Thank you. Okay, I had the countywide mayor's meeting a few weeks ago and we were honored to have State Treasurer Fiona Ma, the our speaker. And it's just one of those opportunities where we kind of get to sit down and chat in a, in a small group and get to know someone like that was, was pretty nice. Usually the state representatives aren't coming to small local areas like, not local areas, but small areas like San Luis Obispo. So it was nice to connect with her and she just talked about some of the projects that she's champion, championing. And so it was nice to, nice to meet her in person. We had a SLOCOG last week and you may have seen in the news that we received a $750,000 grant here in Atascadero for our downtown infrastructure enhancement program. So very exciting. One of the key points had to do with safety for those community betterment grants. And so the fact that a big part of that project is to improve safety in that area, that was key. And of course, it was a tremendous help that Senator Laird had, had gotten us that $3 million out of the state budget. So we were able to show that there is money in that project, that it's moving forward and so good all around. We're still concerned that North County could use, lose its urbanized status. As a result of the 2020 census, they could be changing how they, how they consider whether an area is urbanized or not. And so North County is at risk of losing that, which would be about $1.6 million a year in transit funding that would go by the wayside. So SLOCOG has, has funds to hire a lobbyist to work on our behalf. I don't think we're very hopeful, but they'll work on it. And one last thing, I had mentioned several meetings ago, how at our Curberal Park and Ride Lot, there's going to be two EV chargers installed by Caltrans. Are also doing a little bit of beautification there. So not, not bad. And that is it. Now we are on to, what did I tell you? 6:46, we're getting close. We have one individual determination and council member Funk, I think you were going to bring up a member of the public to maybe make a request.
Yes, thank you very much, Madam Mayor. So one of the things that, and I've learned in the course of my work at, on, with the Homeless Services Oversight Council. Is an issue that, that doesn't just reflect homelessness, but affects, you know, many people also in the House communities. It is a critical lack of services for mental illness and particular facilities for youth who have a mental health crisis. And so we face a situation where someone of the age of many of, of our attendees here tonight in a mental health crisis might have to be either kept in the emergency room for long periods of time. Or sent off to as far away as Ventura to get care. And so Seneca has, Seneca Services, which operates the facility, the former library nearby, has asked us to join in a, to make a letter of, of support for their application for state funds. To do a very small, very targeted project in that location. That would be a combination youth crisis stabilization unit and a crisis residential unit with a two bed inpatient unit. And this is directed at children. Do we have somebody from Seneca here? I was expecting someone to be here and they might have thought we would be going a little, on a little longer than we are. So if I might, if I could ask.
They might be here virtually.
Ah, let's check on that.
Is there a Dawn?
Dawn, Dawn Henson?
Yes.
There we go, Dawn.
Great, thank you.
We could bring Dawn on, that would be wonderful.
Hi, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, Ms. Henson.
Hi, thank you. Yes, we are super excited about this potential. And the state has released a lot of funding to help us build an infrastructure for this. And so talking a lot with the county mental health team and coming together around where some of the, where they feel like some of the gaps of the services are. Is really building out some of this crisis continuum program for the San Luis Obispo region. So that is our proposal, is that we use some of our existing space that we have in Atascadero and remove one of the buildings and rebuild from ground up so we can build out this continuum to try and prevent some inpatient hospitalization stays. And try and stabilize some of the kids in crisis. So we would appreciate any support that we can get while we're going after this grant to see if we can get the money to build, to build the building and then we will work on launching the program after that.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Henson. And I'll turn to staff. Do we have a sense of they would be, in terms of zoning and things like that? There aren't any current issues and to write a general letter of support, we would be, we would be fine doing that.
There are some challenges with the zoning of those properties. One is owned multifamily and one is owned public. They're not insurmountable hurdles. The support tonight is for the grant and for the funding. They would have to follow any of the city's normal procedures if they wanted to do out, something outside of their eligible funding. So we did encourage, and I talked to Dawn about coming in early to try and look at the zoning so that we all have a clear understanding of what they can do by right. What, what processes they may want to go through if they want to do something more than that. But it's all very doable on those lots.
Okay, thank you. So I'm inclined to go ahead and offer that letter of support. I'll just look to my colleague. Does anyone have any questions or concerns about that? Start with Mayor Pro Tem Newsom.
Dawn, what's the target age range that we're looking to support?
It would be any youth up to the age of 18.
What number, youngest, just out of curiosity?
Well, I mean, technically we can go from birth up, but hopefully we don't have any kids in crisis like that. So probably, probably closer to six to 18.
Thank you. Council member Darris.
Thanks. And what length of stays would we be expecting in the two bedroom facility?
That's a, that's a great question. And so we are proposing building out kind of a three, a three or three layered tier system. So the first one would be four beds in our crisis stabilization unit. That is a place where kids can come into crisis to avoid going to an emergency room. And that would be up to 23 hours and 59 minutes. Our whole goal would be stabilizing the crisis and linking them back to their families or wherever they are residing with extra additional mental health services and supports to continue that stabilization. If we can't stabilize within that timeframe and they don't quite meet inpatient level of care. Then we would recommend that they go over to our two bed crisis residential. And that is a place where they could stay up to 14 days to provide us a little bit longer time to stabilize and work with the families to come up with safety plans and transition plans to step them out of that and link them to ongoing mental health services. And if they do need more of an inpatient, that would be our two bed of what we call a PAF. That's a locked facility. And that would give us the ability to help stabilize them and step them down from there. And all of that would be on one property. So we could avoid different hospital stays or ambulance transports back and from. It would all be within one facility where we can meet all of those different levels of care.
All right, thank you. Dawn, a question for you. So you mentioned it's a locked facility and up to 14 days. So people won't be just coming and going. They, you know, once brought, they would be there through the period of stabilization.
Correct. And only two beds would be locked, not the whole facility. Only two beds would have a lock going. But yes, you're, you're correct. Coming into the crisis stabilization or our crisis res, they would have to come by ambulance. So it is not open to the public. They would have to come in on a different way for admin and discharge. So it would be controlled.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I think that was one of, one of the main concerns that we would have. But granted, we're just, we're getting a little into details here, but you know, it's interesting stuff. So we're grateful that you, that you've been here for the last few years, Dawn. We, your organization does a lot of really good work with some of the most vulnerable and those in need in our community. So thank you so much. I think we're in agreement on this.
Yes, Mayor, I do want to comment though, and I think staff understands this and the staff has already clarified with Seneca that you know, this does not constitute a guarantee of any approval of, you know, of any development that would, would have to go through that normal process. And so that's to also to assure the neighbors that that's, we're supporting this in concept because it's a needed kind of facility in the community.
Absolutely. Thank you for making that extra clear. All right. So we will go ahead and do that. Thank you for bringing that to our attention. And I will ask if we have any other individual determinations or actions. All right, seeing none, we will go ahead and is it 6:46? Or does it say 6:48? 6:48, man, I thought I was going to get it under the wire there. Not too bad. All right. Thank you all for coming out tonight. It was really nice to have you and we'll see you all in September.
And by the way, that's a record. 6:48, that's a record. Beats 11 o'clock anytime.